All right, good morning. Call us to order our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, August 23rd, 2016. It is a beautiful day in Story County, Iowa. I'd ask that everybody please join the board as we honor America with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on our agenda, as always, is public comment number one. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment or address topics on today's agenda, anybody wishing to do so. And seeing no one moving to microphone, we'll go to agency reports and our friend Shirley Faircloth from Juvenile Court Services is here today. Shirley, how about that? Just right away.
That's right away.
I got you. Oh, you like that.
First up, first done, right? There it goes. Well, as always, I really appreciate.
No, that's a mic in front of you.
Okay. So, we're good?
Yeah.
You guys said a lot.
Maybe you can speak for last year.
It's been a while. And Marty, welcome. This is the first time I've had the pleasure of presenting before you and, as always, women and rich. So, you all have a copy of their report. Obviously, don't want to just read that verbatim, but I certainly want to point out some highlights. The first and, I guess, most significant, Coms Sutter has been his resignation. He will certainly lose his leadership and miss that. His last day of employment will be October 7th. We will be having a retirement party October 5th and we'll make sure that he gets you information. But he has served Story County since about 1982 and back then Juvenile Court was under the county supervision, our county funding, so he was the chief probation officer for Story County and served the last 10 years as chief of the second judicial district of the 22 counties. So, that opening is currently open. Applications have ceased, but they have not set any interview dates and so I'll keep you informed as far as when that position is selected and who that is.
Is it the intention to have that position named and ready to step into the position October 8th?
I would anticipate that, but I don't know that for sure. Just in general, as far as Juvenile Court, all staff have, tend to have been in space training and really are looking at being more data-driven, looking at what programs work. I've been through the training in supervising cases. It makes it a much more structured meeting with the client. The client knows specifically what their cognitive needs are, what their goals are, their short-term, long-term goals. We're seeing good benefits. This has been proven in other states. What we've implemented so far is showing a reduction in cases already. So, we're really excited. We're really working on rolling that out, how we're going to ensure that we have to delegate the program and I'll continue to give updates as we look forward on that. The other thing I do want to thank the board, we have a new position that will be housed in Story County and the board graciously has applied the office space. Natalie Rich, who was the DECAT coordinator for Story County, has accepted the position as the, we use so many acronyms, I gotta make sure I get it right, the youth transition decision-making position. And what this position is, it really serves youth going into placement and coming back out of placement. And one of those struggles that we've historically seen is a lack of credits following students when they're going into placement and coming back. And so, that will be a big part of this position. She also will be meeting with the youth and the family. The youth is able to, to support people that they have identified to be part of that membership team and really is, I've seen a couple of presentations, they're about a two-hour meeting that the client puts together of the PowerPoint of their short-term, long-term goals and really breaking that down, how they can meet goals. So, it's really an exciting new pilot program that we're getting here in Story County. We will start with our highest-risk offenders and focus on the individuals of the state training school and then we'll look at spreading that out to other residents that are close outside of the county.
And she's for the whole district, not just the Ames sub-district?
That's correct.
And so, you said it's a pilot project. Is there anybody anywhere in Iowa that's already tried this project?
The third district has been doing it for about a year and a half and it's seen some really good results.
Shirley, if I may just interrupt just briefly. I want to call to your attention the New Children's Mental Health Work Group is in the process of RFPs. Boop Out, Basin City, I think, is probably going to cover this particular area. But as we try to broaden the mental health for our children statewide, certainly want to be in communication with the Juvenile Court Services. Obviously, I'm sure there are going to be some of the children that you guys have served that may have some mental health needs and so forth because one of the things that we're trying to be sure that we look at is the wide array of services that are available to children with mental health needs and to be able to document this so that when we go to the legislature for our additional funding, that we've got a holistic look at the various different entry points where people are dealing with mental health, whether it's the schools, whether it be in juvenile detention facilities, whether it be in other mental health provider agencies and so forth. We know YSS, through Jason Hudlin and so forth, years have done some marvelous things in this particular area, but now that we are in this Ketchum area, working with Basin City area, a lot of that, they're probably going to help spearhead. I don't know all the final details, but I just wanted to use kind of an F-bye to stay tuned to that and I can maybe make sure that we forward some information to you guys if you see yourself in need of reporting about ongoing needs, services to deal with a very small segment of population.
I appreciate that information. Would love to partner with you, so any information you can. When we do local surveys, as far as kind of gaps in service, mental health always rises to the top. And later in my report, the Story County DECAT Board, one of the big things that we were proud of this year is that we were able to maintain the school-based mental health services that really kept them employed. So, anything we can do to partner to continue to address that, I'd hope you'd like to be a part of that.
Well, and I said to somebody yesterday in another meeting, but I want to say it here on the record, that school-based mental health services program was one of the really, really good things that DECAT put together and we lost the funding or looked like we were going to lose the funding for this year and JCS came to the table in a big, big way to save that program for another year. Now, they've made application to the asset process. I'm hopeful that this is a program that we can find a way to continue long-term. But Shirley, thank you for JCS coming forward with so much funding to keep that. I want to say it was, it was half the program that you guys came forward in order to save it for this year and so thank you very much.
For fiscal year 1516, we were within line items on all of our budget items. So, what I've listed on your report there is just the ones that we came in on your budget. And so, I just wanted to kind of give an update because I hadn't been here since.
And so, talk to me about protective living. It feels like, as we've talked about that the last few years, we have in fact seen that we haven't had to access quite as many dollars, but we've maintained kind of that $100,000 line item every year, knowing that we're going to fund what has to be funded in that line item. But now, we're less than half that we're utilizing.
Forty-one percent of that last year. So, I think, you know, in the past, that's such a hard number to predict because we don't know how many clients would be going into. It covers the detention cost, it covers expenses that when we place children in shelters other than Rosedale and it covers medical expenses. But given that, around 41%, I think that's certainly something that we could take a look at and reduce that number as we look at budgeting for next year. But keeping in mind that those are mandated expenses by the state.
I have to say it, yes.
You're going to have to pay it. We just need to get to a realistic estimate of where we're going to end up. So, let's circle that one and we'll come back and talk about that in January.
Come too. The other item that we, I think, can circle is the personnel item. So, that's something that we've kept for emergency services.
We reduced it to $50 this year though. I mean, it's something that we need in the budget. I don't see a reason to go below $50 in that so that we have something in the budget. So, we can sure talk about it, but I appreciate that you were willing to go down to 50 this year and that way there's something there, but we haven't accessed that in a few years, right?
And the reason we haven't accessed it is because we've been able to use funding through Story County DECAT Individualized Services, which years ago we didn't have that. And so, we've lowered that cost. I think that as long as we've got that DECAT funding, we've got that backup, it's just that if the DECAT go away, then we don't.
Well, we better play, pay close attention to what happened in DECAT because there are lots of services that could end up falling, at least in part, to boards of supervisors if the DECAT funding stream is not reliable and consistent at the level it has been the last few years.
That's correct. And there is concern that in the next couple of years.
We're seeing it this year.
Yes. Okay. The shelter workshop, just wanted to give you an update. That is money that the board provides to youth and shelter service, say $8,000, rather than paying that per bed charge that the state requires. The benefit to that is we can get services for Story County residents that without that shelter, we would not have available. So, for example, in July, they had eight crisis situations where law enforcement had placed physically, take, remove a family member, de-escalate the situation, provide mediation and then return that child back home. So, some of the counties that I worked in that don't have a shelter, don't have that opportunity of being able to just provide that space to de-escalate situations. So, they tried to include what we're serving, just system-wise and then non-system individuals. I did look back for last fiscal year and we placed 38 children outside of Rosedale Shelter at a cost of $27,288.40. Twenty-one of those were Department of Human Services clients and 17 remaining were Juvenile Court. And various reasons that we look at shelters outside of Story County include we might have a one-risk, we might have co-defendants that we can't place together, we might have a victim and a perpetrator that we can't place under one roof. We may be able to get them closer to services if they're going into a placement facility and that facility has a shelter, they can begin treatment prior to actual placement. And then, in addition to the outside cost for Rosedale Shelter, we also had medical expenses anywhere in $736.61. Those are clients that are at detention, the county is responsible for those medical expenses. Youth and shelter services reports are attached. I spoke with Jared Bug and she says she was here last month and presented regarding the after-school program, so I'm not going to go through that again unless you have any specific questions for me on that. Statewide, the judicial branch is approximately $5 million short in order to keep just the services status quo. Things that we will be looking at reducing this year are a 10% reduction in travel, 10% production in training, 20% reduction in office supplies and postage and 50% reduction in furniture. There will be a hard hiring freeze, so any positions that we think can delay will be one of the unfortunate decisions that is in shifts that become vacant will be held open for six months. So, obviously, that is going to be a slowdown in getting timely hearings for clients.
Are you seeing any similarities between your, these programs for juvenile and the adult system? I thought at second judicial early in the year, they did mention something about hiring freeze in that area and some reduction in travel. So, this seems to be more or less system-wide, statewide?
State-wide.
Yeah, from that standpoint. So, adult as well as children, as far as some of those reductions that, you know, they're seeing.
And I'm not, I can't speak as to the reductions that the Department of Human Services is doing, but certainly they would be impacted by judicial training.
Right.
I have listed programs that serve Story County, I've reported on those before. The addition would be the youth transition decision-making team, but is there any specific questions that you have regarding programs that we have for youth in Story County?
I don't have any questions. I'm really interested in how the decision-making program goes and I would love it if it can fit into the schedule next time you report it, if Natalie could come along and just let us know how it's going.
We will make that work.
Yeah. Marty, any questions?
Speaking to me about Juvenile Court School Liaison.
Okay. The school liaisons are employed by the school district. And so, it is a statewide program and each school district utilizes that a little bit different. But what we've seen since we've had the liaisons in the school is a reduction in the number of charges from within the school. So, in the past, and it goes back to when the school went to the zero tolerance policy, we saw an increase in charges, specifically disorderly conduct charges out of the school. Those individuals typically were low-risk clients that would not see the change of recidivism was very low. And so, they are providing services within the school to ensure that any of those deficits, whether it's attendance or true, and seeing that they're building more relationships with the family and the school would be tying that connection between the family and the school to reduce referrals for our office. The clients that we do have under supervision and were in contact with the liaison and really standing on top of any behavior problems, attendance issues, grades and looking at how we can build our case program to help support that amount of school and program.
Very good. Just it brings with you the data that people that you deal with, they have some good stories to tell and reflect the fact that there are some beginning circumstances as to why a child would hit everybody's radar and the fact that we walked it back from the point that just like he wanted to be negatively impactful on a child. And I think that zero tolerance did answer that.
Yeah, there were some unintended consequences.
There was some unintended because a child carries that on a going-forward basis and that might impinge on success otherwise we're a minor and unblamed incident. Thank you.
You're welcome. I've attached copies of reports from Youth and Shelter Services. There are four brief reports. Also, Natalie has resigned from the position as DECAT Coordinator for Story County. The board is currently in the process of working with Boone Dallas DECAT Board to determine if we can share that coordinator position. It goes back to what Rick was saying earlier, as far as our funding for DECATs across the state, we're prepared to be reduced. That meeting with Boone Dallas is scheduled for this Friday, so I should have more information and obviously Rick, you serve on the board, so at our next meeting, that's where we'll have more information regarding that. Natalie's, I've attached a report from Natalie regarding the programming from the DECAT for the fiscal programs including the next fiscal year. One of the programs that we do have is a transportation contract and we've looked historically as to be the sheriff's office used to provide those transports to Ford and to placements for high-risk individuals. And I believe it was 800, I'll check that number, 870 transports last year at Central Iowa Detention. So, that saved, kept our deputies in the county being able to serve the residents versus being on the road and providing that transportation. So, that's a real valuable contract and I think to Juvenile Court Services, I think it keeps law enforcement here in the county and we would prefer that they're doing it.
Let's talk just a minute about what the proposal is from Story County DECAT to Boone Dallas, which is currently a shared position, if you wouldn't mind going through that for the board so that they're aware of what's being proposed. And you said we'll go to the Boone Dallas DECAT on Friday.
Okay. Currently, we have Natalie's position, has been a full-time position here in Story County. The Boone Dallas DECAT Coordinator is also a full-time position. Given the reduction in state funding to provide those local services, we're looking at the possibility of having that position be half-time in both counties and then sharing that coordinator position. The benefit to Story County is the Dallas, Boone Dallas Coordinator has been in that position for a number of years, so we would be looking at a skilled person coming in knowing that DECAT utilization system is feeling strange. She would, obviously, we would take her around so that she's been learning with Story County programs and meeting people, but she would bring, or bring with her a wealth of knowledge.
So, obviously, with one area though, and you factor in would be the transportation cost as she's traveling to and from, that would have to be factored in, but it would probably be offset in terms of the fact that each county now will be expected to be contributing towards overall operational costs. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the cost savings then, we can use for direct services versus administration costs.
Yeah, so the issue, Wayne, is with the, I think, fairly severe reductions in funding that's flowing through DECAT, there's less for a coordinator to do, right? We had a full-time coordinator, she did a wonderful job. There's a reason that JCS hired her in the position they hired her in, but we had enough funding to really put forward some substantive programs like school-based mental health. I want to talk about backpacks here in just a minute because that was a really cool program. Credit recovery at Bothane High School and Nevada High School was an impactful program, all of which we don't have funding to do in the future. So, it means that there's going to be less for a coordinator to do while we're in this funding crunch. And so, it seems to me that it makes a lot of sense to not spend quite as much on administration when you don't have as much to administer. So, that's where that's coming from. Let's see, I mentioned three, we talked about school-based mental health, talk about backpacks because that was a phenomenal program and then talk just a minute about the credit recovery at Gilbert and Ames High School, if you don't mind.
Okay. The backpacks, maybe to look at, I can't remember how many backpacks Story DECAT provided, but I know that we had two halls out in front of the building. I think it was 500 plus, if I remember right.
Yeah, so we spent almost $75,000 on backpacks and school supplies and everything else. And all said and done in Story County, I think we reached about 1,800. Now, Wayne Boys and Girls Club played a big role with the first 500 of those, but there was a line and they ended up changing the location from the middle school to the high school. There was a line all the way through the high school parking lot to get this done. And what an impactful way for youngsters to start their school year, having backpacks and the supplies they need.
Very exciting. And I did, we didn't have to turn anybody away. I don't, I didn't hear that, but and nice backpacks. I mean, that they would fit in and it wouldn't be like, this is a cheesy backpack and everybody knows it's donated. The supplies were in. Natalie had contacted each of the schools to go for elementary, what supplies do we need for this and had packed those supplies specifically for the schools. They had a number of forms of schools on what they anticipated they would need and so I think we were able to meet that need, but I haven't heard the final.
And that's a program that is not funded currently for next year. We just need to be aware of that.
At my Boys and Girls Club end meeting just last week, Erica did report on that and she talked about it was such a phenomenal outpouring and collaboration of several partners that worked together and they had to move it to the high school because, you know, they just ran out of space and so as they moved to the future, this will be an important thing. But she also talked about there were a few supplies and other things left over and they currently have a place right now that will be able to store those for other use and they'll be able to reach out to families and if a need arises, particularly if there are new people moving into the community and things of this nature. But she was extremely pleased. And another thing that I wanted you to be aware of is that under her leadership and also with Andrew at YSS, the partnership and the working relationship between the Boys and Girls Club and YSS is just growing and that is turning out to really be a neat thing to see that we're both working together to meet the needs of people in our community. So, from the board's perspective of Boys and Girls Club, that is something, something that is really needed and there's opportunity to use to utilize facilities when needs to be and things like that. So, you know, anytime different agencies can partner for the benefit of our.
Oh, you can leverage, you can leverage your resources to provide more. So, final thing Shirley that I'd like to talk about and we don't have numbers here in front of us, so you and I will kind of have to hit it back and forth, but is the credit recovery program funded through DECAT for Ames High School and Gilbert High School? And I was impressed with the results of that. As I recall, the numbers off the top of my head, at Ames High School, they served 93 students. I think somewhere in the 18 of those students were seniors trying to graduate. All of them, but one graduated with their class and the one that didn't graduate with their class graduated in the summer. So, we were able to recover credit for all those kids. And Gilbert, I want to say the numbers were a little smaller, but it was more impactful where like 100% were able to catch up and maintain on pace with their credit. That is one of the programs that if we reduce our administration costs, as Shirley talked about, and we're able to shift some of those administrative dollars into program dollars, this is a program that could potentially be saved. In fact, that was the intention that I think formally came out from our DECAT Board with making this proposal to Boone Dallas.
That's correct. And in addition to just the credit recovery, the beauty of the program was there was connections made with the program. So, it kind of goes back to what you were saying, Marty, as far as what is the underlying issue of the students weren't getting there and really there was contact with the parents, family members and looking at that broader picture and the outcomes were amazing.
Yeah, and the two programs were run in an entirely different way. So, Ames was a, what is a Friday evening. If you weren't getting your stuff done, you got the pleasure of coming to Ames High School on Friday evening in order to recover. Gilbert was more they, as the school day went on, there was somebody there, the second you started to fall behind, they were working with you to make sure you caught up. So, two really different ways of viewing it, but both showed great, great success. Any other questions for Shirley? Shirley, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is consideration of minutes from August 16th.
Move and approve.
Second. Any changes, corrections, notations? Clinton?
Aye.
Chief?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Minutes passed. Personnel actions, board as listed.
Move and approve.
Second. Motion in the second, Clinton?
Aye.
Chief?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Personnel actions passed. Consideration of claims.
Move and approve.
Second. Motion in the second, Chief?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda, board please add road closure 1711 and utility permit 1712.
Move and approve the consent agenda with the aforementioned additions.
Motion in the second, Chief?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda passed. Public hearing items, two of them today. Second consideration of ordinance 243, amending ordinance 241, renaming Maple to West Maple. Jared?
First consideration was before the board last week, the 16th. And you said this is the second consideration?
To the street did get moved, right?
What's that?
Street's still in the same place, Wayne. So, you took us through the whole thing last week.
Correct.
Have we had any comments leading up to this meeting on it?
We have had, no comments. We did send out communications, all the emergency response staff within the city, within the county. We also, here in our office, agency emailed the information and received no responses. Again, this is a request for the unincorporated portion of Maple, to change it from Maple to West Maple for the area west of the city's corporate limit city, Nevada Outlast at 600 Street. There were a couple of incidences where there was delay in responding within the city and within the unincorporated portion, confusion about location and whose responsibility, whose jurisdiction. We're hoping that this changed.
Well, right now, from east to west along that road, right? It flows, in the far east, it flows from Maple to West Maple and then you get back in the county and it goes back to being Maple again. You'll see where that would be confusing. Questions for you, Wayne, and maybe this is more of a question for Jessica, if the board were so inclined to waive the. the third reading, any issues with that on something like this? Just to move on, we've got no comments. None of the residents had any opposition to this.
Just that road name changed on the last.
Doesn't change the address. Any questions for Jared before we open the public hearing? All right, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to address ordinance number 243. See, you know, when I want to close the public hearing, I want to move to the board. Board, it's your call. We can.
I would approve that we approve on second consideration ordinance 243 amending ordinance 241 and waive the third and final reading.
I agree. Okay, so we've got a motion in the second. This waives the third and final reading. If it passes, meaning that this is final as of today. Any comments? Clinton?
Aye.
Chief?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passes, waives, third and final reading. Gary, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Second public hearing item is first consideration of ordinance 244, ordinance for the purpose of prohibiting the use of electronic smoking devices in public places, providing a penalty and establishing an effective date. As you'll recall, board, this came to us, recommended by the Board of Health. We actually talked about it a little last week because Denise Ditten was here last week. But we need the full public hearing now. As I understand, we've got some representatives who, do you have a spokesman that would like to come up and address us on this? Let's wait and work. You guys go ahead and sit down and then we'll open the public hearing and then we'll do it. As I understand this, the intent here is to recognize that vaping devices are inherently similar to tobacco products and that we at Story County should treat them that way. This mirrors an ordinance that was in fact passed by the Ames City Council. And that's where we are. Questions or comments before we open the public hearing? In that case, let's open the public hearing. Please start by introducing yourselves.
So my name's Kirsten Guayer.
I'm Ashley Bolson.
And we're the co-presidents of the Health Promotion Club at Iowa State. So as members of the Health Promotion Club, we did original research, we did a review on that surveillance issue. So we wish to underscore the importance of an ordinance like this one as a tool in helping to promote clean air and also in preventing the use of vaping devices and other nicotine by young people. The emerging body of research is clear that the use of vaping devices is not safe for either the user or bystander. Research is also indicating that the use of these devices has become influential and very normalizing smoking, particularly amongst teens. So these are both public health concerns. The FDA recently ruled on these issues, but did not speak to the banning of these devices in public spaces. So we wish to do that with this approach.
So originally, we came to the Board of Health to pass this position in Story County. And we were told to pass from Ames first and then come back. And so as of six months ago, it passed from Ames. Eight months ago, it passed for Iowa State University. And so far, we've had no negative repercussions with this. So we're here today requesting to pass change of this ordinance to ensure that all citizens in Story County are included in the health concerns that Kirsten mentioned and reduce potential confusion that could come from piecemealing this with individual towns. I knew Denise mentioned last week that they had tried this in Johnson County, like Iowa City area. They've been going town by town. So we're hoping with an ordinance for all of Story County that it'll be uniform and clear to everybody living in the county.
And did I, from your perspective, did I state it correctly earlier that you're simply asking that we treat vaping devices in the same way we treat tobacco products?
Yes, yeah. But we're as small as the Iowa Smoke Free Air Act, so to be treated in the same way.
Board questions?
I applaud their efforts up to this point. I hope that we have a joint vote.
No, not so much of a question here, but I think you just qualified it with your last statement. We're going to treat this in the exact same manner as we did cigarettes. And when I looked at the ordinance, I just wanted to acknowledge that the Conservation Board, because of public grounds and camping areas, were looking at this in terms of how this would impact some of those areas. And I think that we gave a pretty clear understanding and authority to the Conservation Board, particularly as we came to the camp areas. But it was my understanding, and this will be something that I'm sure the Conservation Board will be talking about at later time, is when there are public gatherings or events that we would try to enforce the ordinance here as we would other types of things, understanding that the buildings, the residents, range of residents and all of those things, we would like to make sure that the spoken of these cigarettes was also treated very well. So I just wanted to bring to the attention that there were some questions from Conservation. And I believe that if we treat it in the same manner as the cigarette ordinance, we're on solid ground as far as I can.
Yeah, I think you said it clearly. I think if this ordinance passes, then what it means is if it's appropriate to light up a cigarette, it's appropriate to use a vaping device. And if it's not, then it's not for both. And Conservation does a great job administering those kinds of things. And I would expect them to continue to administer if this ordinance passed in the same way. Just have consistency all the way through. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to address ordinance 244? Yes, sir? Start by introducing yourself.
I'll do that. Information that Healthiest Ames provided to the city council of the mayor about a year and a half ago. Just wanted to share that with you. Hi, I'm Dr. John Scherholz. I live in Ames. I'm the co-chair of Healthiest Ames, which is a 501(c)(3) organization whose mission is to enhance and help healthiest issues in Ames and Story County. We strongly support the ordinance and I think you've said it very well, to treat it in the same way that the tobacco products are treated. We feel very, very good about and feel affectionate.
John, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for John before he gets away?
No.
Anybody else wishing to address ordinance 244? I'll close public hearing. Turn to the board for action.
I would just like to say I appreciate everybody's effort up to this point. And I believe society has moved beyond the necessity of backup. And I'm glad to see as technology moves us into a different realm, we treat them equally. But I would move to approve the first consideration of my ordinance 244.
And you want to set second consideration?
Second for next week.
And set the next hearing or what did that leave you for?
August 30th.
Move approve, second.
Yeah, so we've got a motion on first consideration. Set second consideration, which I think is important in this case on August 30th. And then see what comments, if any, we get back. Further conversation. Chief?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passes on first consideration. Second consideration will be August 30th. Thank you very much. Good job. Additional items. Discussion and consideration of resolution 1721. I'm not even going to try to say agricultural subdivision. Emily, I'm going to let you tell me how to say that. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you? This is a request for a SUV 0816 agricultural subdivision plan. This is the we, agricultural subdivision. The applicant, this property is located in Warren Township in section 26. The applicant is Wayne Weave. He's part owner of the property. Here's a vicinity map. We are, let's get in Warren Township. The property is located about three quarters of a mile to the southeast of McCall'sburg. It is along 140th Street. There's a subject property there in the yellow in the center. It is, we have. The property is located along 140th Street and the street that goes north into McCall'sburg is 616. The Sampson Farm Platte is approximately a half mile to the southeast of the subject property. And within a half mile, there are only three dwellings. And there are 11 parcels that are equal or greater than 35 acres, which is the minimum lot size for a dwelling in the A1 district. The, all of the property in this area is only A1. Here's the current configuration of the property in red there. Parcel A has the existing, the farmstead that was previously split from the parcel. But the goal of this is to really create equal division between siblings in a property that was given to them. So here's the current configuration. Here's the proposed division. It would just be split north-south, or sorry, east-west versus north-south. I have here Wesley, Wesley Weave, he would own this parcel here and this one on the west side. And then Wayne would own this parcel to the east. And it's about 58 acres, acres, sorry, for each.
So the yellow box Wesley is a 40 acre. Adding 18 acres to it, you make it 58. And then the new one that we'd be creating on the far west.
Right, 1257.28 or something like that. The use of wood we've made agricultural in crop production, this doesn't know. Here's a picture of the platte. Lot one, like I said, is about 18 acres. And then lot two is about 57. Here's looking east on 140th Street. Moving north, moving north from the subject property, like I said before, most of the surrounding property is A-land in rural crop production. Here's the farmstead to the northwest of the subject property. And here's looking west on 140th Street toward 660th Avenue. Here's looking southeast from 140th Street before the property. Here's proposed lot one zoomed in. This is the farmstead on parcel A. And then to the south would be proposed lot one. Here's the dwelling, which was built in 1964. Agricultural buildings on parcel A. And then proposed lot two, which would be to the west.
Who owns parcel A?
Wayne does, yeah.
He already owns that.
So the regulations in our land development standards, agricultural subdivision platte, requirements are that it's intended for agricultural use. It contains no new development lots. There's no land, some parks, new streets, alleys, parks dedicated, open space, full property for use. And it's completely in the A1 or A2 districts. We did have a couple of comments from the interagency review team. The auditor's office said that the current ownership is split up between the siblings currently, and that's how it should be put on the platte, since they have not changed over the title. We had a couple of comments just based on our requirement, I'm sorry, Planning and Development Department had comments just based on our requirements. And we asked for a written statement just saying that it will be used for agricultural purposes. We did receive, we sent out notification letters to surrounding property owners within a quarter mile on August 12th. And we did receive one verbal comment from a neighbor that was just wondering if they were going to convert to cattle or livestock and add any buildings. And I talked with Wayne Weave and he said that don't they intend to keep it in rural crops?
However, is that an automatic requirement that they can't change at a later date?
It could use for, could be used for livestock.
Yeah, because.
Until they get to a certain number of animal units, they could do this.
That's what I thought, right.
But they can do that right now?
Yeah.
As it's configured right now?
So in summary, the primary goal is really just to divide the land among siblings, among family estate. The lots will be used for agricultural purposes and will not be development lots. The agricultural subdivision really does fit with the character of the area and is surrounded by numerous 40 acre parcels in agricultural crop production. There is no flood plain on this property. And so the Planning and Development Department recommends approval of the subdivision and alternative number one here. Historic Money Board Supervisors approves the subdivision platte. We leave agricultural subdivision as put forth in case SUV 0816. Any questions?
Questions? All right.
I'm moving it. We accept the resolution 1721, leave agricultural subdivision and to acknowledge the recommendation of the planning zoning for Hoover, on all prior departments.
Got a motion in the second, further discussion. Clinton?
Aye.
Chief?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Resolution 1721 passes. Emily, thank you very much. Next item is 1722. This is the Plunkett Estates Residential Parcel Subdivision.
I'm leaving the Plunkett.
Say Plunkett, we might have never gotten to.
As you mentioned, this is a residential parcel subdivision. The applicant is Gary D. Plunkett, 66150 325th Street, Maxwell. Property is in Indian Creek Township. The property is located southeast of the city of Maxwell. It's about an eighth of a mile or less from the city, corporate limits. This shows you the surrounding land use. It is surrounded by agricultural properties, but it's also adjacent to two single-family dwellings. Within a quarter mile, there's actually eight dwellings. Three of those are within the city. And then there's five parcels within that quarter mile that we could issue zoning permits for single-family dwellings because it needs the 35 acre minimum on-site requirement. So parcel has frontage along 325th Street to the north. It also has frontage along 663rd Avenue along the east. Zoning map, everything outside of the corporate limits, which is the red line you see. The offset is zone to A1 agricultural district. This is currently parcel G is the configuration. It's a 7.83 acre parcel. A little bit of history, Gary did come to our office requesting some property research for the adjacent parcel, which is currently owned by his father, Thomas. He wanted to know if that parcel could accommodate a single-family dwelling. We did the research and land evaluation, site assessment, lease-up information came back, whoa, so it could accommodate a new dwelling. There was some misdirection, if I can use that word, which turned into redirection with this mill. Initially was told that he could do this with a plot of survey. That process started, he hired the land surveyor, they did the field work, the proposed location for the dwelling, and the dwelling is for his daughter. It would be this south portion. So if you're wondering why the irregular shape, proposed location for the dwelling is in that southern portion of what is currently parcel G. As I said, it was, they did a plot of survey. We did do, in our response, we indicated that it couldn't be a plot of survey because the first vision was this 3.4 acre parcel, which contains Gary's house, one of the accessory structures. The other accessory structure was actually located on his father's property, which was a 34 acre parcel. And then you see too, there's another access to the south, which that access which that access, uh, was, uh, off of six hundred and sixty-third, uh, avenue onto the adjacent parcel, which again is his father's. The other access is off of three-hundred-and-twenty-fifth Street, and then goes to the residence. So initially it was a plot of survey. We did communicate that the process to do the division was residential parcel subdivision, which is what we're working on today. But the plot of survey, the work that was done to do the division, um, is the field work, the survey, analysis, that information got recorded. And so we got, we were in the redirection mode. And so to redirect, we suggested a boundary line adjustment, which took in the three-point-four acre parcel, which includes Gary's house. Currently it includes the two outbuildings and the two accesses. Excludes the two drainage areas that you see to the west. And it included the one-point-five acre area, which is, uh, for their, for the daughter's residence. So this is parcel G, and this is through this residential, or excuse me, through the boundary line adjustment. That is permitted. And then from this, we have this proposed division to divide this once into two, which you follow the residential parcel subdivision process. You have to have an existing dwelling, which we do. Each parcel needs the at least one acre in size. It would be, um, the north lot one would be six-point-three-three acres. It would contain again Gary's house, the two outbuildings. We're going to have both accesses on the same lot. Again, before those, the access that went to the buildings, there was no recorded easement. It was an agreement between him and his father. And then we have the proposed lot two, which is going to contain the space for, for his daughter's dwelling. So another thing through this process, um, that we're achieving is the purple line represents the road right-of-way. And east of the three-point-four acre parcel, we have just a forty-foot road right-of-way. So from center of road, east is what the road right-of-way is. There was some area that was acquired for drainage for this creek, um, a while ago. But for the most part, the, the full width east of where these two proposed parcels are, we only have a forty-foot road right-of-way. So through our review of it, we, we had a request from engineering to obtain another thirty-five additional feet along the west side of six hundred and sixty-third, so that we can work on grading and drainage improvements. So that's another benefit to this request. So this takes us to the actual platte. Again, lot one, six-point-three-three acres would include the house, the two outbuildings. There is a corn crib there, uh, two access points. The two drainage areas will stay to the west on the farm ground where it belongs. And then you have the proposed lot two, which is for the proposed new dwelling for his daughter.
And so talk me through, Jerry, real quick, how the, the proposed new lot for his daughter at one and a half acres, that, that is a buildable lot?
It's a buildable lot.
And what, how does that, how does that qualify for us as a buildable lot?
It's, um, again, from the plot of survey that was done, which is parcel Z, uh, G, they're able to split that once into two with this, um, residential parcel subdivision process. Each lot, uh, first of all, you have to have an existing house.
Right.
Which we do.
Yeah.
And then no more than two development lots, which will have no more than two, um, existing and the proposed. And then a minimum of one acre each.
Okay. And, and so I just want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding what happened here. So grandpa owns the ag ground.
The thirty-four acres to the west.
The son owns the house and most of the accessory buildings, but really one of the accessory buildings and the southern entrance to the property is still on grandpa's land. So they do a bump, it was, they do a boundary line adjustment, which is allowable in order to make this kind of funky look and shape thing, which now includes everything on the son's lot. And now son wants to break off the bottom piece that used to be the ground for grandpa in order for daughter to be able to build a house.
Which is the location where they wanted to build anyway. It's about ten feet higher in elevation than where Gary's house is. So it's probably the best location.
So did Gary come up with all this on his own? Because it's really, really creative.
Well, we, through communication, back and forth, really worked out.
I, I don't recall ever seeing something like this. It's, I mean, it's, it's a really creative way. And you're saying it meets all of our requirements regulations?
It does. And the good thing is the area between the accessory structures and the proposed new lot, it's going to be, continue to be farm ground, continue to be farmed. And Gary and his brother participate in farming this parcel and the parcel to the left, which is also under, under fire.
Okay.
So we're into the site photos. This is the intersection on three-hundred-and-twenty-fifth and six-hundred-and-thirty, six-hundred-and-sixty-third Avenue. We're going to be panning to the north, gravel road, uh, panning to the east. This is the access, again, off of three-hundred-and-twenty-fifth Street, that's Gary's house. Looking back toward the access drive and the intersection again. The elevation of the road does increase to the right of these trees, which is actually to the west. And that's where the accessory structures are, and the access and the corn crib, which is what you see there. The access going in, you kind of see the right-of-way. It's pretty, it seems to be pretty level under the road. So having that additional thirty-five feet will help engineering to, to create, create a ditch for drainage. This is at the high point of proposed lot two, looking westward. And then looking to the south, actually where it turns into corn, that's an adjacent parcel to the south. So again, these are the rules for residential parcel subdivision. Again, two development lots would be created. There's an existing dwelling on the parcel. Each lot would be at least a minimum of one acre. And no variances would be created. Again, we talked you through, engineering requested the additional thirty-five feet for road right-of-way. And we're going to get an easement from Gary for that. Also, uh, they mentioned that they needed to, initially the access that they requested was going to be more central on that proposed lot two. But through the review of the engineering department, it's been suggested that they move that further to the south, that we can give that three-foot separation from the existing access to the proposed new access. Just comments from staff trying to understand when improvements were made, who participates in the farming, that kind of thing. And then we did send notices, August twelfth, and then also communicated this request with the city of Maxwell. They did send us a resolution, waiving their right to review it August first, as soon as they pass that. So again, it does meet the requirements of the residential parcel subdivision, identifying the land regulations. Good thing is lot one will contain the house, two accesses. The drainage will be off to the west in the ag ground where it should be. Getting the thirty-five foot easement through this. Supported by the city, or actually waived, the city waived their right to review it. Which brings us to the recommendation, which is to adopt, um, resolution seventeen dash twenty-two and approve this Plunkett Estates residential parcel subdivision.
Questions?
The list, lot two have access only on six hundred and sixty-third. Will the county have any problem if the, the families want to, uh, connect? But it's obviously that north, uh, you know, I don't know if you put the picture up there, but.
You want to know if she was the shortcut up to dad's house?
Yes, as you see, uh, back. As you see behind the house, they're, uh, going past the outbuildings. So if she builds there and they would like to connect there, would the county have any issues that way?
Connect, like, increase the lot size?
No, 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 no. You see the background, you see that, that, uh, they have their entrances on, uh, three-twenty-five.
Right, right here.
And then you have that. I mean, if they're, from whatever reason, going forward in the future, would you, county have any problems if from lot two that that was connected?
From like a private driveway?
Yes.
If that became the only access?
No, no, no. I mean, obviously Gary's got several there. And I'm just saying, if they were to show that there would be no, the county would have no qualms in saying that she would have initial access if she wanted it, or the face of justice.
She can eat the three hundred foot, which I think she can.
Okay.
Right, well, what they do on their property is private landowner, you know, they grant each other an easement. They can, they can build whatever they want between properties.
You're talking about extending like a drive north to the downtown?
Yeah, that's it, no problems.
Like Rick said, they should probably do that to ease it sometime, I think.
I just kind of, that's where I was wandering towards. It's really not in your, um, purview, but those are two of the worst bridges in the county, right next to this. I know you've pictured.
One looks pretty rough.
Beyond a little rough, and it's good.
Too bad you don't know a supervisor.
Maybe someday. But the thing is, I mean, it's more for Darren to speak to, but it's just like, you know, I'm glad to see that you got the easement setback. I mean, for drainage on the west side of that, those are, you know, you, if you've not been there, there was two horrible bridges, you wouldn't even exist, you'd think existed this, you know, day. But they need to be gone. But I'm glad to see the families did not, um, oppose this and with review, um, by the county, so that's good.
Questions, Wayne? All right, looking for action on seventeen twenty-two.
I would move that we adopt seventeen twenty-two Plunkett Estates residential parcel subdivision.
Thank you.
We have a motion, second, further discussion. Chief?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders' aye, resolution seventeen twenty-two passes. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
No departmental reports today, no other reports. That gets us to public forum number two. Opportunity for members of public to comment on items not on today's agenda. Board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of meeting law. But we may take action in the future. And we got Barbara Kessel? Barbara Kessel, who would like to talk to us about the Plunkett pipeline work. Come right up here. Barbara, Jerry, and Emily will move out of your way. Barbara, start by introducing yourself and, and giving us your address, and then we'd love to talk to you.
Thank you. I'm Barbara Kessel. I live at five-four, one-five-five, two-hundred-and-eighteenth Street, Kelly. East of Kelly. And I would just briefly like to extend an invitation to visit southwest, um, Story County now. You will see a lot of racing trucks go by if you venture down the Cambridge Blacktop, Highway sixty-nine, Slater Blacktop, the Kelly Blacktop, and all the adjacent gravel roads. You will see a lot of little white and green signs that have the letters, um, D-A-P-L on them and arrows. And, um, I just think if you haven't seen that area yet and see the, well, in my terms, destruction going on, it's quite an image. And, um, I often think it's out of sight, out of mind. So I, I think it's, um, would be good and make you happen down in that area to see what's going on. I appreciate that. There are lots of, um, lots of trailways being, um, being worked on. I just hope that you will think about the people and imagine yourself that you own that land and you've paid taxes on that land for many, many years. And, um, you will continue to pay taxes on that and, and keep in mind what costs may and expenses may arise in the future. Be watchful of that. And if you have that image, you're not in the game.
Well, Barbara, I think it's a, it's a great point. I mean, the reality is, they're here.
I understand.
You know, we've been talking about it and, and it's happening.
And it's happening.
Right now, um, the, the county continues to try to stay one step ahead in what authority we're given, uh, by the state. We are paying particular attention to the haul routes that they're, uh, that they're taking and, and the work that they're doing. And it is, uh, it's a hard situation. It's going to be hard, uh, while we get to. I, I was happy, anecdotally, uh, we had our floodplain manager, who's actually sitting in the room right now, who was out doing, uh, I think her second visit to these sites as she deals with some of the floodplain. And Leanne, I don't want to overly put words in your mouth, so if I misstate this, just raise your hand and say, no, that's wrong. But, uh, was told by one of the, uh, representatives on site that was escorting her around the site, that Story County is requiring more out of them than any other county that they're dealing with. I wear that as a badge of, of honor, that we're requiring more. There's a limit, I mean, I know there's a lot of people who want us to do more. There's a limit to what we're empowered to do by law. Uh, I'm pleased, uh, that we seem to be doing everything we can. And, uh, I really feel, uh, for, for how this is clearly impacted. Thank you for coming to this one today. Any question for Barbara before she gets away?
No.
It's a coincidence, I have a plumber coming to my house this afternoon because a pipe leak there. Pipe is leaking.
Oh, no. Let's not have any leaking pipes.
Well, I have to get a new washer and dryer, so I know what you're, this is like. And it, it's been two weeks for the, yeah.
Barbara, thank you. Liaisonist, I'm Sock, it's Wayne.
Uh, yes, uh, met with Carla yesterday, uh, and primarily we started out by talking about the, uh, uh, Bill Helft's government's board. And one of the topics that is being, uh, talked about, I believe in our last board meeting, each, uh, board member, each county representative, uh, was asked to, uh, have some discussion regarding, uh, regional employees and the salary that would, uh, be generated. They have developed a salary matrix. Carla has been working with Alyssa. As you know, we've been looking at, uh, Story County's model, uh, as well, and trying to share this with the region. Currently, just for informational purposes, uh, you know, we have two of our staff that are funded fully by the region, and one, uh, is funding out of the general fund. And they're only, uh, I think fifty percent of their, uh, time is, uh, covered by the region. Couple of things that's going to be talked about, and I don't know if it will be finalized in this meeting or not. I don't think there are quite many, uh, but for boards to consider, there are three options, uh, when they, uh, propose this. And one of the options would be to develop a pay, pay matrix, where then, uh, trying to equalize them throughout all of the ten county regions. And then each, uh, uh, board supervisors would then have to approve that. The second option would be, uh, the, uh, the regions would establish a dollar amount that they would put towards the salary. And then this would allow counties to exceed that amount if they so desire it. And then the third option would basically be to just leave things as they are. And so, uh, before any final action is taken, I will certainly, uh, update us in terms of where the region might be, uh, going along this line. The se- second option appears to be, uh, something that might have a little bit more, uh, wiggle room, uh, because it gives the, uh, uh, individual comics a little bit more control about some of the services, uh, that are there. Especially when we try to look at equalization between, uh, the, uh, administrative staff, support staff, based on number of years. I know we've been doing some things within our salary now and trying to, uh, bring that closer together. And, uh, depending upon what the regions do, Carla did have some concern about one person in her particular office, but, uh, we will be talking about that. And then I just have to make sure that I sign a conflict of interest statement. And Marty Sishtier, the representative, I don't know if you're going to need to do that as well. He probably will have to, uh, do have it out, out. They just gave me the form.
That was addressed with me here at the last meeting that you and you had gone for. Then that might be something that I would have to do, so I'm aware of that.
Okay.
So Wayne, I think that's a really interesting conversation that the region is starting to have. I would suggest that there's one more option if the region is really interested in making sure that everything is equitable in the regional structure, uh, in terms of employment is sound. And that is for the region to form its own employment group and they stop, we stop having employees that work part for the county and part for the region, and we do the whole thing. And I have not heard that option discussed yet. And then so that you know, as our representative to the region, where you're going to get, uh, some major pushback from at least one member of the Story County Board of Supervisors talking about the region, is if the region starts to suggest that somehow their comparison of how they pay employees is more valid than the comparison that we just spent seventy-five thousand dollars or more comparing Story County employees to other Story County employees with like responsibilities. And so I think there's a lot that we need to discuss there, including the very structure of administrative services within a region and what that looks like. And I hope we'll have that full conversation to go forward.
I'm sure we will, but that's to me, our option two, uh, give that flexibility to, uh, Story County. And we're not compelled to follow, uh, lock, stock, and bear on what the other nine counties might do. But I will certainly make sure that that is, uh, brought up for discussion. They are not there yet.
Right.
There are so many things that has to be worked out, uh, when it comes to actual full regional employment. And it may take some time.
Well, as a non-representative to the region, somebody who is paying very close attention, it looks to me like you currently have an administrative team that is pushing this thing in one direction and a board, the supervisors, who are suggesting that it ought to go in. another. And what I would encourage you and the other supervisors on the board is to remember that you are the government's board. The administrative team is supposed to provide the services, you're supposed to step forward. Absolutely, great. Liaisonist Simon, anything from you, Marty?
We had an emergency management meeting to meet with the code access people and the handoff group, which will be Sunoco. And when, on the completion of the construction here last Friday, we met with the respective law enforcement agencies, Story County, DPS and Iowa State, and the Huxley Cambridge Police Chief. Pretty free-flowing conversation in regards to the expectations of the code access people of law enforcement in turn, expectations of the law enforcement agencies on responses and mitigation of any circumstances going forward, as you've seen in Jasper County and potentially Boone County and other places, that pretty well laid out, that nobody was looking for any escalation, but I think all parties were prepared to address it when it comes to that. Also had a meeting with the conservation director, Mike Cox, with the key cooperative and elevator owner, Darren, last week in regards to trying to lock in a trail through the Zering area and I think we have found a path forward that we can possibly save the money at the county upwards of twenty-two thousand as opposed to what, when I first got here, that we were originally considering. So we got success on the horizon, we just need to lock in some more things and with the help of the others, I was looking at our, this week I have a meeting with the Nevada recreational center task force in regards to bringing a potential rec center to either the hospital or the, the city grounds to the south here and we will be, this RDG is the engineering firm from Ankeny that has gone through a community to solicit information from different contact groups and they'll be providing that. So we might have some direction in the timeline going forward, when you might possibly see a rec center being constructed in conjunction with the hospital and the city here.
Yeah, I had that meeting last week with our, our RDG. It's going to be fascinating to watch that process as they gather input. I heard from Drew Camp that you and he have been working in Colo on some residential. Anything you can update the board on all that?
I would have to say you will probably, with likelihood, we have, Colo as a community has moved from a bi-monthly economic development back to a monthly model and they have scheduled this probably the twelfth of September, that they believe that they have the opportunity to strike in several areas and that the community is having increasing desire to see something come to the pass in behalf of themselves in the school district. So I think that you have success in Colo in regards to seeing some kind of new housing which has not been part of their recent path or, and they think that they can make that part of their future. Went to the Nevada State Council meeting last night, as we didn't have a Nevada school board meeting, which is another story, but in that, Nevada had the opportunity to adopt a voluntary annexation of forty acres contiguous to Nevada in regards to a development property that is already being addressed to upwards of seventy-plus lots and I think you can see things happening here in Nevada as well.
Outstanding. Well, thanks for, thanks for digging in on those. Please keep us updated as those things progress. Wayne, any announcements?
Yes, this Thursday, IMWCA trustee meeting is going to take place and Marty, I think that I'll be done and be back in time for the one o'clock regional government's board. This meeting is scheduled to go from ten to two. We've got a couple board members, I understand, are not going to be there, trustee member's not going to be there. So when I get there, there's a quorum issue for voting.
Right.
And they can't move things around. I may give you a call, even if you could cover for the first fifteen to half an hour, I'd be back. Just check your schedule.
No, I believe at the, from the last meeting that you and I tested, affected the likelihood that I might have to stand in at your absence to get back, so I just wanted to come in there anyway.
Okay, great, thank you. Appreciate that.
Anything else? Marty, any announcements? I don't have any, I take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.